Good afternoon. I'd like to call the workshop for the Greenville City Council for December 6, 2021 to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight, this afternoon's workshop. First, I'd like to call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Okay. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pretem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Okay. And councilmembers Smiley, Litchfield, and Meyerhofer have all informed us that they will not be attending tonight's workshop. Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager?
We, I have no changes, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion is made by Councilmember Bell, sent by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, Mayor. Three zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number one. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is a public art recommendation for the Down East Sculpture Exhibit on city property. And I'll call for Holly Gariot, who is the Executive Director of the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge.
All right. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
So, we're really excited. It's that time of year again when we start preparing for our Down East National Sculpture Exhibition. This is the 16th Annual. And just a little reminder of this exhibition, it's a great opportunity to get large-scale outdoor work to our city and throughout our county as well. Each, each year, we send out a national call for entries. And this has grown significantly the last two years as we've used a national platform called CAFE that not only culminates all the entries, but advertises to national artists as well. And so, this year, we had over 80 entries from artists from 13 states, which is really amazing that we're getting this kind of recognition for this national exhibition. And we hired a juror named Jason Mattson, who's from Wisconsin and who has 35 years of experience as a sculptor, as well as instructor in sculpture. And he has given us sort of a short list to work from. And then the Civic Arts Committee has made their recommendations from that list for placement on city property. So, we will have five locations this year. The sixth, we are hoping that the Hart will be, become a permanent fixture in front of City Hall. And we'll be using this next year to find another placement throughout the city of Greenville. So, if you have ideas for a new placement for 2023, please let me know. And the Civic Arts Committee is working hard on that. So, tonight, I'm going to be showing you the five sculptures that this Civic Arts Committee is making our recommendation to you to be placed on city property. The first location is at the Reed and Cotanch intersection. This, this artist might look familiar to you because right now, we have a piece by Hannah Gibran. And we are so lucky to have the caliber of artist. This sculpture was actually, will be receiving one of the major prizes from the juror this year. And we like to show that off at this prime location. So, this sculpture is by Hannah Gibran. It's called Solar System. And this is right in front of Chico's. It will be going in that placement. Next, we have a sculpture by Adam Walls called Father and Son. The recommendation is for this to be placed at the Town Common Location, a toy, toy-like fun expression. And this will be going by the parking lot. The sculpture pad is there, close to the bridge. The next sculpture will be placed at the Harding Street Access of the Greenway by an artist named David Skora. This is called Baroque Standing Figure. And this location is at the Stansel Drive Access by an artist named Kirk Sees, and it's called Magnify. And this is seven feet tall, just to put it in perspective. It's hard to see that scale in this photograph. And then the last recommendation is actually to have this sculpture remain at the Elm Street Access. This is a big grassy field near the Greenway. And this is a sculpture called Memory Bomb by Adam Walls. And we have, just like the Hart, we have received a lot of comments from the public about this sculpture and really liking it. When, when we had some flooding out there, it seemed right at home. It looked like the river brought this up. And it also has an interactive component to it. There's a musical box inside that you can twist and listen to those musical notes. And, and this sculpture, the Pitt County Arts Council would like to purchase with your approval to be added to the public art collection by a private donation. We were very lucky to receive to be able to, to build our public art collection. So, those are our five recommendations. And just to put it in context, timeline-wise, we have 17 sculptures throughout the county. And we will be rotating those sculptures come late February. And then the opening of the exhibition is the first Friday in March. And I, you may have seen in social media also, the town of Farmville and the Farmville Community Arts Council is trying to purchase one of their sculptures that is in front of the new public library. So, we're excited that this is starting for artists, that, that some of these sculptures are starting to be purchased as well for permanent placement. So, it's an exciting time for community and public art. So, if anybody has any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to move the memory bomb either.
Yeah.
Looks like a doozy.
Well, it's amazing to see these artists come in and rotate it out. And yes, it's an event in its own.
How heavy is that? That looks extremely heavy.
I, I have it written down someplace, but it's, it's incredible. And you'll see these, these artists come. And a lot of times, they are with a group of people moving this up onto a trailer. And they, they put in a lot of work for this, for sure. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. They look great. All right. Madam Manager, item number two?
Thanks, Mayor. The next item is a presentation on amending the rules and regulations related to bars and clubs. This is a follow-up from the discussion the council had at the November council meeting. Chief Planner Shontae Goovey, along with Director of Planning and Development Services, Tom Barnett, will provide that presentation. What we're hoping to do today is to reconfirm what we heard from the council at the November meeting, and then to talk about what those regulations would mean. Okay. Ms. Goovey?
Good evening. All right. So, the mayor, or the manager just said exactly what I've got to say for the first ones. That's okay. Follow-up from November 8th workshop. And again, we're just wanting to make sure that we're all on the same page. And so, this is just sort of a compilation of what we heard. So, from your November 8th workshop, what we heard was more opportunities downtown and with some updated standards. We heard allow more bars and clubs. And again, I always say, it's the same thing to me. If I say bar or club, just think the same thing. Allow more downtown with special use permit. Delete the 500-foot separation from bars and clubs from each other. However, we're still keeping the 500-foot separation between single-family districts and single-family homes. Establishing new use, bar 2021 for right now, with some quality standards. So, again, having an annual review, enabling revocation of a special use permit if there are some issues. Also incorporating some public safety, hours of operation, safety standards. And I'm going to get more into those. First of all, the definition we have is an establishment which the principal use is entertainment, and it meets the following. So, it cannot charge, cover charge, or an admittance fee. We have occupied less than 3,500 square feet of space. The reason that is important is because we are trying to keep sort of a warehouse-style size club. So, we've limited it, we've limited it to 3,500 square feet. Can provide live or recorded music, have floor shows, dance, full-size bar, and may also have food as well. So, again, this would require special use permit from Board of Adjustment. So, that means that the location would have to meet the criteria and standards. We can also apply reasonable conditions to the permit. The permit and the conditions apply to the property, run with the land, not with the owner-operator. And then also, they would be annually reviewed, provide an opportunity to bring it back to Board of Adjustment for review, revocation, and renewal. And also, this is, this is the similar, same, similar thing we have now with DNEs, bars, clubs, microbreweries. So, the big question is where? We heard downtown. We've got two different ways of looking at this. The first way would be to look at anything that's zone CD, which you can see everything in pink is zone CD. An important consideration is that a lot of this property is owned by the government, and that's the city, the county, and also the federal government. So, when you back out those properties, which have those green hatch lines on them, then you're losing some real estate in this area. Another option is to just draw a box around what we would consider the downtown area, regardless of zoning, and just look at it from the perspective of within this red boundary. Again, you have to consider those green properties are going to have to come out of it. This is just an area, just to kind of give you a little bit more perspective of where things are located. So, of course, we've got the horseshoe, and then we've extended it out to Dickinson Avenue to the Tenth Street Connector. So, again, what we've talked about is balancing between regulating and also giving opportunities. So, some of the standards, again, we've talked about, annual review by staff, taking those findings to Board of Adjustment. If you're providing amplified entertainment after 11:00, you would have to provide a security guard or law enforcement officer, one for every 50 to 199 persons, and two for 200 or more. This is the occupancy of the building. It is not based on the crowd at the event that night. This is the same standards we use for DNEs currently. An exterior lighting plan, this is for private property. This is the same standard we have for DNEs. Hours of operation, limited to midnight, Sunday through Thursday, 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. I'll talk about this just a little bit later. This is getting into crowd control. This is getting to where at 2:00, all of the bars and clubs now empty out and leave. This would be a way to help the police department have people leave the downtown area without everyone leaving at 2:00. No cover charge or admittance fee. Collect and dispose of litter in the vicinity by 7:00 a.m. the following morning. Shall only admit individuals over 21. Shall use apps and software to detect fake IDs. Have a security plan approved by the police department, a lighting plan for buildings, the lots, the lot itself, and the parking lot. And have a parking plan, which demonstrates that people can get in and out of it. Again, with these types of establishments, it's usually everyone shows up at one time, and then they generally leave at one time. Shall not offer any kind of drink pricing specials such as penny drafts. This is not half-price drinks, that you have those from in the evenings. You'll comply with all current building codes and safety standards. And again, additional conditions can be placed. So, how do other folks do it? So, we looked at various cities in North Carolina and how they regulate, or even how they don't regulate. An interesting one, and we just put it up at the top, is Goldsboro. It does require basically a special use permit in their downtown area. They have some separation requirements. The interesting thing is, is they only limit two per block. Don't really know where that comes from, but that's really the only separation from each other that we have found for other places. Raleigh is by right in most of their commercial districts. They do have some separation when you're talking about between residences. So, they don't have any kind of live entertainment or outdoor seating, or it must be within 100, or 100 feet from a residence. Wilmington, again, they have by right. There is no outdoor sound provision, 1,000 feet within a residential district. Durham, by right mostly. 200-foot separation from churches, 50 feet from residential. Fayetteville, again, by right. They have 500-foot separation from childcare, churches, and schools. On the right-hand side, on this column, limits on concentration, again, that's separation from each other. So, Raleigh, Wilmington, Durham, Fayetteville, do not have a separation from, from the same uses.
Can you go back to Raleigh one more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Oops. Going backwards. There we go. So, we have Wilson. Wilson does require a special use permit. They do have some limitations. Again, 500 feet from residential uses, residential zoning, churches and schools. Rocky Mount, it is by right. But they do require a manager to attend a nuisance and violation reduction program. Not exactly sure what all that entails, but they do require that of the establishments themselves. And then Greensboro has a whole other way of doing things. And at the end of the day, I mean, they, they have a, a public safety review board. They also have the ability to revoke their special use permit. And the big takeaway from this is most of this enforcement is done by the chief of police, as opposed to any kind of planning or zoning issue.
I wonder how they would categorize violent crime?
Again, that's really a morpheus, and, and how they delineate it, and, and what happens if it's outside on the sidewalk, as opposed to inside. That can be really sticky to deal with. So, what I've done here is I've tried to give you sort of a synopsis of the takeaways, because I've given you a lot to think about. What we found is most cities' zoning requirements for bars and nightclubs are far less complicated than what we have. They do not even have the many establishments of like wine keg and beer shop, microbreweries. They don't even get that far down into the minutia. Most of it is by right. They all do have separation requirements, but obviously, they vary from 50 feet to 1,000 feet. The one, again, this is the concentration. So, this is separation from each other. Most of them do not limit that. The only exception was Goldsboro. And then, they usually apply some very basic zoning requirements, but they roll in the public safety measures, and they work with the police department when you are, when they're looking at these uses. And what we're talking about there is the security plan, parking plan, lighting plans. They regulate standards and conditions, such as we've talked about, outdoor seating and sound near residences, residences and church. Most of these allow this by right. And they are really more hands-off in their downtown area than they are in the suburbs. Some of them do have a special use permit when you're getting near neighborhood commercial nodes, and especially if you're having sort of a live or amplified entertainment component. The big takeaway is, it's not all this is solvable by what we put in our zoning ordinance. Some of these things are, but public safety is a much bigger animal to deal with. Also, you're dealing with the number of properties. And if you bring it back down to either a zoning district level, or even that boundary area, then that, that is the only options available. That also means, though, that you may have more pressure on downtown to have these kind of establishments. And so, that's where we go with, you know, sort of a pro, a takeaway. You can have more opportunities for these establishments in the specific area. The con is, is you could be increasing the number of people. That could also put pressure on the police department. You have crowd control issues. So, once again, you know, this isn't a real easy thing to tackle. This is just a map here, once again, showing you the current establishments. So, our next steps are any feedback, any direction, what you like, what you didn't like. We'd like to take this information to the stakeholders group. We will probably be getting them together in January. Let everybody enjoy their Christmas. And then what we'd like to do is bring back to you a text amendment that hopefully, we can fold in the different feedback from you, where the stakeholders group and planning kind of fold it back into the dough, and bring you a text amendment that will, that was not a pun intended, but it works so well, right? And, you know, bring back hopefully, an amalgam of all the different things we've talked about, and to hopefully, bring you something that you can work with. And so, I'll be glad to answer questions, or run through anything if I need to.
I see one council member that has been feverishly writing notes over here, so I'll call on him.
I will give you my presentation. You don't have to make notes.
For the parking plan for downtown buildings in the bar 2021, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of, a lot of buildings in downtown that don't have an actual parking lot that goes with them. They rely on the public parking. Would we still, would we waive that for buildings in that instance, or would we require them to show where they're going to utilize public parking?
Well, we would definitely like to know. But in downtown, you know, we don't require parking. So, when we talk about that parking plan, this would be something more akin to like Third and Jarvis, where you have a private parking lot, you know, where, you know, do you have adequate parking? How are people going to park? How are they going to leave at night? Do you have enough lighting everyone can see? So, downtown probably is not going to have a, a number of parking space requirement, but we certainly are going to have to, again, add that to the people who are already here, and consider that they're going to bring in more numbers of folks.
Okay. Would, would bar 2021 replace, you know, the different, I guess, would it replace the differences that we have set aside for like bottle shops, breweries? Would this be a replacement to that, or in addition to it?
No. This would be in addition to it. And as I talked about, I guess, in November, also bringing a little bit more equity to those uses, and that those uses are actually less intense than a bar or a club, but they actually have more restrictions. So, trying to add some more equity to those as well. But this is not supplanting any other use other than the, the current bar and code standards that we have now, that have 500 foot, all the 500-foot rule separation requirements.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I got.
Any other questions? I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
One thing, I guess, that I'm a little concerned about is, I think in the part of the proposal of, or one of the ideas was closing these bars down early. You know, and I just, to me, I guess, what I'm thinking of is, from a free market standpoint, it would be tough to ask them to close down and then empty out into, especially the downtown area, where other bars and establishments do have the right to remain open until 2:00 a.m. And I would think, and this is just my thought process, that probably the majority of the people that are going down there, potentially would be bar hopping, aren't going to leave a, a bar, and then if something else is open, just get in their car and drive off. You know, I'd be a little concerned about that. Or, you know, just hanging out, out there, out on the sidewalks, because they see friends or something that are waiting to get into a club. That was kind of my biggest concern with just doing it wholly into the downtown area. My idea, my concept was always that you allow different establishments to open out elsewhere throughout the city. And then essentially, when the bar closes, and if you close it at 1:00, there's nowhere else to go, so it's time to go home. And that would prevent that from happening. So, that was one of my concerns that I had. And then, the other thing was the, kind of the prices. You know, I'm not big on setting prices, let the free market dictate it. I get the intent. I totally get the intent. Met and talked to enough bar owners to understand why some of them do not offer that anymore. So, I totally get that. But from a government body standpoint, I just, I didn't particularly like that.
Mayor, Shontae might want to explain to the council that, that, that sort of variety of uses that we have, that we exist right now of establishments. Many of those already have in there requirements related to closing time. So, Shontae, oh, there's your rainbow sheet.
Rainbow sheet. I feel like I just need to make 100 copies.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what those closing times, how, how we look at closing times, Shontae?
Sure. So, we have wine craft and beer shop, and a wine, beer, and keg store, two separate uses. And they have to require, they, excuse me, they have to leave, I'm so sorry, they have to close by 11:00, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight Fridays and Saturdays. So, this is, this is not uncommon to have hours of operation, again, and we have that with some of these, I would just say, similar uses that we have.
What about a brewery?
Um, I don't see that one. I see those two.
That's what I see too.
And then there is some, and there is some disclaimers, not about closing, but about amplified sound at certain times as well, and especially when you're near a residential area. So, we do have things that relate to a time or hours of operation.
What time does a brewery close?
We were just checking that, and we don't appear to have a, I thought it was midnight on weekends, but it doesn't show that.
I thought, I thought a brewery was a different time than a regular.
Yeah, I thought so too, but evidently not. We'll double-check that and make sure we get it right. But we have the two that do have a closing time of 11:00, and then midnight on weekends. And obviously, we want this to reflect the desires of council, so...
I appreciate the work that's gone into it so far. I think, you know, if you look at, you can pull up that map, if you don't mind, of, you know, the current establishments that we have on the books. A lot of them are kind of right there on that Cotanch and Fifth Street corridor. You know, in my mind, if, you know, the issue is people letting out at 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. en masse, and, you know, causing issues from a public safety concern, you know, spreading the ability in the area that they're able to open up, you know, out, I would think would lessen that issue, instead of bottlenecking. You've got, you know, more people spread over, spread out over a larger area. So, I definitely appreciate the work that's gone into it so far. Hopefully, we can get some public feedback here after the holidays and take some action on this.
So, can, can I just, just, just try to clarify, Councilmember Bell, Shontae, can you go back to the two maps that show geographic area?
Sure.
Based on the council's original direction to us as we first rolled this out, what we heard the council say is, do something related to downtown. And the staff has two suggestions. One is to make this as a, an item for which you could receive a special use permit in the CD zoning, and that's the area in pink. Or, can you go to the next, the one that has the boundary? Or, the other option is to just identify a geographic area. And when you identify the geographic area, and then I think the next slide shows the government-owned property, it, there, there is a fair amount of government-owned property within the geographic boundary. So, it isn't going, I'm going to just be clear, it, it isn't as if this ordinance change opens up a significant amount of additional territory, and could do what we, what I think you just mentioned it would do. It might push some, some additional establishments downtown, which is slightly different than what I think the mayor articulated a moment ago. And that is, that if the intent was to open this across, certain areas across the city, it does not do that. So, again, we are, we are pushing, we are still pushing those establishments in the downtown. Now, again, this is the prerogative of the city council. The city council can make those decisions about you, what you want to do. I just want to clarify that there could be some unintended consequences of the actions.
That's what I, that was my concern. But I think I was in the minority last time when we had this discussion. That's what I, that was my concern, but I think I was in the minority last time when we had this discussion.
Last time I was, I was open to doing it citywide. I'm just not pretty sure. I've got a note on it at home, but it was specifically wanted to avoid, you know, changing the distance between res, single-family residences and places of worship. Because from constituent input that I've got back, feedback I've gotten, you know, there's no desire at all for people for that to be changed. So, um, you know, I think a good example of a place, um, you know, that is, is in a place that fits is like the Buccaneer out on Fire Tower Road. You know, it's out in a commercial area. There's, there's no housing around it. It doesn't bother anybody from what I know. So, I mean, you know, things like that, I feel like are something that we should, you know, try and encourage if we're going to have any expansion.
Anyone else got comments?
I think our concern was Dickinson Avenue, if I wasn't mistaken. But this doesn't seem to.
You're talking about further down Dickinson Avenue?
Yeah, further down.
Where Mayor Prince and whoever was commenting about.
Correct.
Sure.
You're saying you want to see it further, go, go further down?
I did not.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah.
I was about to say what?
No, no, no. I was saying that was our concern at the time.
So I think they need some feedback. I think we're kind of, uh, going around in circles right now.
What feedback do you need specifically?
So, are you content with this proposal? Are you content with it? Again, Shontay, can you start at the beginning where you said we want to confirm what we heard? Okay. Where you have the ear, okay. And that is downtown. Downtown and updated standards. So is that what I hear? Downtown and downtown? You all want to focus on downtown?
I just don't want to exclude downtown. That's, you know, I'm, I'm okay with allowing it in other parts of the city as long as it's, you know, in an area that is outside of the 500 feet of a church or a single-family dwelling.
So what I hear Councilmember Bell saying is preserve the distance from churches and residents, which is, is that, if that existing requirement, 500 feet? From churches and residents?
Yes.
500 feet. So I hear Councilmember Bell saying, you're okay with outside downtown as long as there's a 500-foot spacing between churches and residents.
Yeah, because, because my understanding is that the 500-foot, uh, rule has also included existing bars. If we remove the existing bars, then it takes away the problem from anybody who may want to open up shop.
So here's my recommendation, and the council can decide on this. So last council meeting, you guys made the decision that you wanted to focus on the downtown area. And I think if we go ahead and start opening this up right now for the entire city, it's probably going to confuse our staff because we're trying to focus, we come up with ideas here. Why don't we focus on the downtown area? And then at that point, if we establish what we want downtown, then we can always go back and look at the full citywide scope. I mean, is everybody okay with that? Because I'm just, you know, I was in the minority last time where I thought it should be the other way, but I know Councilmember Smiley and I think it was maybe Councilmember Meyerhoffer, both had agreed when they were here that, I'm not going to speak for them, but I think they had stated something along the lines that they really wanted to focus on the downtown area. And I hate for us to go in here and then make the decision and change everything up. So if we can give them, if, if they have clear direction for the downtown and we focus on the downtown, then you guys can move forward. And then at that point, once we get that established, we can talk about if there's an opportunity to look at a citywide approach.
Okay, so we have a focus of downtown. Does the council have a preference whether or not we do it via zoning or just a geographic area?
I'm going to show you those maps again if it helps. So, uh, again, if you back out government properties, you're losing some real estate. That's the CD zoning route. And then the other route is just the geographic route. And again, you're going to lose some of that as well. What this does do is it gives you, um, it, it, it does help give you some more long, um, First Street and brings you a little closer to 10th Street as far as if you draw a geographic area.
My, I guess the only thing is, if we're focusing on that, what do we have in place that we wouldn't go like they had discussed down Dickinson Avenue? Because some of that stuff down there is CDF as you go further down there. So if we keep a geographic area there, that would prevent it from going down into that direction.
That's correct. This is a, down on Dickinson, it's a little bit of a mixed bag of zoning. So that would preclude someone from having to get the property rezoned. Because we do, like I said, we have two other zoning districts in that area. So it would at least open up Dickinson without having to have it rezoned.
I'm, I'm fine with going by geographic area.
Geographic area. Okay. And then Shontay, can you go to that slide that showed the, um, potential standards that listed all those bullet points? There you go.
Is this the one?
So these would be sort of, um, the standards that would accompany at the bar 2021. And we'll, we'll sort of scratch our heads and try to come up with something other than bar 2021 to describe it.
I kind of like it.
Cover charge or admission, um, less than 3,500 square feet with the idea that they wouldn't be, that they wouldn't be huge clubs. No, uh, may provide live entertainment, may provide a floor show, may provide a dance floor, may provide full-service bar, and they may offer food. Is everybody content with that?
I'm fine with it. Yeah, is there a way where we could limit the amount of, limit the amount of new bars that could open per year?
Well, it doesn't have to go before the first special use permit before the,
It would have to go before the board of adjustments.
But are you thinking about just creating just an artificial, like, you cannot exceed this amount?
I'm just thinking of the concerns that I've heard from, from people that have reached out to me like, hey, what if we have, you know, 20 new ones in a year? I'm not saying that'll happen, but you know, if there's a way to kind of cap it so that we don't just have this mass flood, you know, create a problem within a year, you know? I mean, you just never know.
I mean, I, I would turn to, I would turn to the city attorney to ask if whether or not we could provide a, a cap or something like that.
Yeah, we could research that. I know with a special use permit, if you meet the criteria, you're entitled to the, to the permit. But you may be able to put a cap on it. I'm just, I'm not sure. We'd have to research that.
Yeah, that'd be, uh, be kind of interesting to do that.
You can cap, like tax cap permits.
I don't think, I don't know if you could do that. I feel like that would be. Yeah, I was going to say, I think that'd be kind of like manipulated in a free market.
Do you have a suggestion of a number?
No, it's just, it's more of a, more of a question just to kind of.
So if, say we could, I'm just wondering what we might come back to you with. Is it two, four, six?
I think something like that, yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't have an exact number. It was more of just kind of, you know.
We'll find out.
Just throwing it out there, something to consider.
So Shontay, I think there's another place where there's some additional questions.
This is where we break them down a little bit more.
An annual review, special use permit. This is one that would require, um, a certain amount of security depending on the size of the establishment. And that, it's important to point out, I think Shontay did it, but we'll do it again. It's based on the permitted capacity of the establishment, not how many people are there or anything. It's when the fire marshal goes and says this is the capacity. That's how we determine how many law enforcement would have to be there. Or security guards, an external lighting plan, hours of operation. This would end, this would provide that they would close a little earlier than the existing bars that are downtown with the idea that I think the chief would, would, um, probably shake his head to what I'm about ready to say that, um, 2:00 at 1:30 to 2:30 in the morning is, um, is a challenging time for law enforcement in our downtown. And if this is successful and creates more people coming to downtown, what we don't necessarily want to do is create a law enforcement challenge for the police.
Yeah, my question was more stemming from, I think it was Goldsboro. I had like two per block, you know, so I was just kind of thinking of way, you know, other ways that it could be capped to make sure that we don't have, you know, the cup running over in the first year.
Well, I mean, I think the market will probably dictate that too at some point. You can only have so many bars. There's only so many people that are going to patronize those bars.
Then the litter, and then I think there's one more. People, uh, people over the age of 21 require use of apps or software to check for fake ID, submit a security plan, a lighting plan, a parking plan. Drinks prices, Mayor, you had a comment about this drink prices. We do have, um, some establishments that's at some very low drink prices. And I think as the council has indicated to us was a, was a desire to recruit some bars and nightclubs that potentially cater to, um, a slightly older or more mature audience. Is that fair?
But not necessarily. One of the things I mentioned, not necessarily does everybody want to go and pay five to $7 to $15 for a drink. There are people that do like to go to bars after they go to work and have a drink.
And, and I'll just say this. I don't think that this envisions a, um, let me speak for staff. I don't think that this envisions a, preventing low-priced drinks. I think that this envisions artificially low-priced drinks. Penny draughts and very, very low-cost, um, alcohol is what this would envision.
Are we concerned about overconsumption? Are we concerned about, what's a concern?
I believe that overconsumption would be what the concern is when there's very, very inexpensive-priced alcohol. It does, it could tend to lead to overconsumption.
Well, then, then probably something should be established when we have discussions when they go to the Board of Adjustments as far as penalties for violating. If they get in trouble. Of course, we're not the enforcement of that. But if there's a enforcement given by the state agency over a certain amount of times, then they probably should be subject to going back to the Board of Adjustments for a review.
It might be interesting to talk a little bit with, uh, with ABC and ALA regarding their efforts to enforce. I think while they, and, and I'm going to ask the chief to sort of give me a shake of the head on this, but I think that typically what our partners tend to do is focus on consumption by those that are not legally allowed to consume. Overconsumption is difficult, is difficult for those partners to enforce. Right? What the, what the partners tend to enforce would be for someone who is consuming alcohol who is not of age.
We could go on this for a really long time, but I, my, my thing would be that during the, during the discussion that we have, that from a police standpoint or from a violation of whatever, from the establishment that we include something like that through the special use per, permit process. And we can look at that at a different time.
Well, we, we're certainly happy to bring some information back to you all. That, that can at times be problematic.
Sure.
That can be problematic. The next item is really, the next item, the second bullet on the sheet is really non-negotiable. The bill, the, any new, any building will have to meet current building codes and safety standards. That is a requirement. Even if somebody can meet the 500-foot rule today, that is a requirement. And then the Board of Adjustment would have the opportunity to add any additional requirements. So I think what I hear the council saying, focus on downtown, work on the geographic area, do a little research to determine if a cap, a cap is permissible, a cap by the number of new establishments permitted in a year or over a period of time, but some way to potentially limit the growth of those bars. And then, um, we can bring some additional information to the council related to the hours of operation as well as the cost of the drinks.
I'm fine with it.
And I think that that helps and gives, again, we're trying to just narrow down the direction of the council. So I think that this helps. Okay, to staff, any other questions, Shontay?
Just one finer, finer, final point because I answered the wrong way. Separation from churches is ABC. That is not a city, um, regulation. I will say that's typically like 50 feet. It's not a large amount of separation, but that's not by the city.
It's actually guidance, the A, A, it's actually guidance. It's actually not a hard investment. Okay, I think this helps.
And then next time you guys come back, when we have the rest of the council here, we'll give you a whole another set of, of ideas.
Not a shocker, not a shocker.
Okay, great.
All right, we'll move on to item number three. Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next, um, item is a presentation on the 2021 citizen survey results. And I'll ask our PIO, Brock Ledgeworth, for that presentation. Brock?
Hello, how are you?
Good. Good to see, good to see you behind the microphone, Brock.
Yes, much more comfortable back there, I must say. I'm going to run through the 2021 citizen survey results with you. Just a little bit of background on this. We last conducted this in 2018. We had planned to do it, uh, continuing with our two-year cycle in 2020. Obviously COVID-19 and the pandemic had an impact on that. We tried to wait it out and wanted to get it in in 2020. It ended up getting delayed considerably. And I think it's important, as I run through these results, to think about what impact COVID might have had on some of the responses as well that we're going to see. So this year's, uh, survey was conducted February to October of 2021. The majority of these responses came in on the front end of that. This purpose of the survey, gathering information from residents about satisfaction, identifies what the city's doing well, where improvements are needed, helps staff develop priorities, and also can be utilized by you guys, the council, in establishing goals during strategic planning. This survey, we changed up how we did it. In the past, we had utilized, uh, E, the ETC Institute, which is out of Kansas. And, you know, we looked at cost, we looked at the length of survey, and we explored some options that maybe we could oversee in-house. And so we purchased the annual premier, um, subscription for Survey Monkey, which, uh, gives us some of the same features. Some of the most important features are the same that we have, as you see listed there. The unlimited questions, uh, obviously sentiment analysis, uh, cross-tabulation and response mapping. But there are some other features with Survey Monkey that we felt like, uh, would be really beneficial for us. And, uh, particularly when you consider cost, which I'll show in just a second. Those include multiple departments being able to use the survey tool, uh, having multiple users, unlimited numbers of surveys we could, uh, conduct. We've also got the filtering and trend comparisons. But also as IT moves us closer and closer toward, uh, full use of Office 365 and Microsoft Teams and the Power BI app, we have the ability to integrate the Survey Monkey with those and, and do more collaborative work there and have more opportunity for better graphs and, and, and visuals with our survey. Here's the, the big difference right here. So ETC was 21,5, $21,500 the last time we conducted this in 2018. I would add, it had increased, the costs had increased each time we had done this, every two years that we had done this. So I'm quite confident that the cost would have been, uh, an additional one or $2,000 probably for, uh, 2021. Whereas our annual subscription with Survey Monkey provides all those same features. At $2,700, you multiply that by two years, you've still got significant cost savings there.
Bet you got rave reviews on that part.
It, it, it makes a lot of sense. So here's how we administrated it, uh, online and paper copies, uh, publicized it through various ways that you see listed here. Face-to-face distribution was a little more challenging because of COVID, but we did make some efforts to get paper copies in the hands of some local civic groups as well. And really this survey was shortened, as I mentioned, and really wanted to focus broadly on, um, various aspects of city departments with a future opportunity because of being able to do the unlimited surveys, more opportunity to dive deeper into these results in the future. Uh, here's a look at demographics. So this was actually very challenging, uh, and this is something that we learned from conducting this ourself. And we can improve on the next time we conduct one of these surveys. Obviously, a lot shorter, the time spent conducting the survey. And I remember all of you, well, some of you made comments about the length of the survey the last time I presented to you. But the demographic questions were the most skipped on the survey. So you had a hun, out of 523 respondents, you had 152 that skipped demographic questions in some form or another. So what I did was I broke down responses, um, including all of those and the ones that skipped the demographic questions and those, uh, who completed the survey completely. And the results were almost identical. So for the sake of this presentation, I took all of the results and, and presenting you with all of the results and, and responses that we got. I will say that, you know, one of the biggest concerns in looking at the demographics in determining whether to include the responses or not was location. You know, we wanted to be sure there are actually residents of the city that are, you know, benefiting from the services. Sure.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, before I get into the results, just an overview of what you're going to be seeing here. The majority of the questions were presented on a scale of one to five. Percentages that you're going to see are indicative of the percent of people who had a favorable answer and a favorable response, and it excludes all neutral responses. You're going to see arrows indicating whether it went up or down from the previous survey in 2018. I would point out, though, I wouldn't put a whole lot into the direction of those arrows because the changes were minimal for the majority of these responses. Actually, I was kind of shocked at how similar the responses were to what we had in 2018. Here we go, getting started with that. This is city effort to prevent crime, 60% favorable responses. You see enforcement of traffic laws. I'm going to kind of go through there. It's a lot of information. What I'll do is I'll follow up and give you guys a full report, but I'll kind of get through this right now.
And just for clarification, so the ones, like, the blue arrows pointed up, that's an increase from the 2018?
Correct.
And then anything that was red pointed down, that's a decrease?
Correct. And again, a lot of those changes were maybe a percentage point or two. This, the most significant changes, I'll point out on the last couple of slides that I have here. So, you see the, the policing up there. Then, these were among the most significant changes. The feeling of safety in the following situations, all increased, with the exception of your neighborhood during the day. That remained the same. And you'll see some of the increases on that on the last couple of slides, but they were significant. City efforts to prevent fires, enforcement of fire codes, provision of EMS services, and overall quality of fire EMS services as well. Just let me know if you want me to stop or go back or anything, I'm going to go through these. Maintenance of city streets and public sidewalks, these are mostly public works-related items here. Trash collection services were among the most significant increases. I got a star on the transit and grate there because that had a 65% neutral response rate. So, that was by far the highest percentage of neutral responses we got on anything. Give you a chance to look at those. Here we go to some engineering-related items. Condition of street signs, traffic signals, adequacy of street lighting, timing on signals, overall management of traffic flow. The stormwater run, one, I think is interesting, I'm, um, something you'll see a little later. And here's code enforcement items. When I talk about following up on some of this stuff, I think this is one where you look at it and there's an opportunity to take advantage of the cross-tabulation and look at, okay, well, where were the majority of these negative responses located in the city? Go match that up with the dresses and see, you know, what opportunities there are there for us as city to, you know, dive a little deeper into it and see what we can do to address some of these concerns. Okay, so here we've got some recreation and parks questions. These were almost identical. I do recall the percentages, I think it was like one percentage point or so from each one, and then one of them remained the same from where we were in 2018. All right, this is kind of a busy page, but there's just a couple of things I'm going to point out related to communication here. The efforts to keep residents informed and the usefulness, those were small changes. The most significant thing that I took from our responses here is the number of people who currently get information from social media or prefer to get information from social media jumped by about 30%. I mean, we were at like around 45% people responding that way in 2018, and now we're at 72, 76%. So, and the traditional media of radio, TV, newspaper, all decreased by about 10 percentage points.
Which could be kind of skewed, too, though, because, keep in mind that a lot of these news stations are putting their stuff on social media now.
True.
And so, instead of them watching it on TV, they're actually doing it at their own timeframe. Instead of getting on at 6:00 and watching the news, they can scroll through, you know, like, on the app, or they can go on to, you know, the social media, one of our TV station pages and go through that and get all the news.
That is true. And, you know, at the end of the day, I don't want to make it seem like I'm discounting any of these outlets because, as communications guy, I think it's important that we get it out there every way we can. You know, it just, it maybe causes us to be a little more strategic with what we're doing from a communication standpoint.
And, and it, also to point out that a lot of the survey work was done via social, our social networking sites, right?
Because of the climate.
Even though we tried really hard to get the paper copies out, it just was more difficult because of COVID and people weren't going, people weren't engaging in traditional meetings. But, but we do, I think for Brock and for his staff and for the city, we have to find the, the right balance between using social media to tell our story and making sure that we're getting to all the audiences that need the information, not just those that may be engaged in social media. It makes it difficult because frankly, I think we have to use all of them. We just can't depend on one, we have to use them all.
But this lets you prioritize where you put the most of your effort.
Right. Right, and we may decide, when, again, as we can cross-tab this data, maybe we can identify there are some geographic locations where there's not high usage of social media. And so, maybe there's some other ways to get to some of those households. And maybe that's through our recreation centers, other ways that we could get that information out. But it is shocking that 76% of the people who responded said they get the information from the city versus social media.
That could be a good thing and a bad thing.
Well, that's true, too. Depends on where they're getting that information.
We're social media sites.
Yeah. Okay, so here was a question about how important you think it is for the city to continue to invest and focus on the following. We did not ask about stormwater management in 2018. We did this time, and it's at 98%, tops on the list. City streets, bike lanes and sidewalks, I think you would assume would be near the top. You know, all, all of these are very high totals when you look at them. In retrospect, maybe you go back and you say, what are your top three of these? Because what you end up with is, oh, yeah, it's important to invest in this, it's important to invest in that, invest in this, and, you know, you've only got so much money to invest. Here's some other, because we're all the 70% or above. Again, all, when you consider 70%, that's quite favorable.
It's a nice picture.
This, uh, we threw this one in there out of curiosity because we were right in the middle of pandemic. We asked, rate how likely you are to participate in or attend the following during a pandemic. Concert or festival, 64%. City meeting, 39%. A city-sponsored program or class, 57%. All right, here are the most significant increases. I mentioned the safety, residents feeling safer in those environments, satisfaction with trash collection up, condition of street signs and signals, we talked about the media and those responses. Here are the most significant decreases. Fire EMS, down 10%. That one, um, might have been one of the more surprising, just because of our typical, but, I mean, the percentage was still very high. And next steps. So, we're going to distribute copies of the survey results to the departments for further review. I'm going to additionally get you guys full results so you can take a look at them and dive into them. And if there's anything that you want to explore more, just let me know, and I should have the ability to pull a report. But the staff will now look for opportunities to get additional information in areas where results did not meet expectations. Consider those responses in planning and execution of services. And we will bring back a follow-up report to city council on steps that have been taken to address some of this.
Any questions or comments? I just want to say thank you. I mean, I, I think that these surveys are extremely beneficial to not only the staff, but us to a council, too, because it's, a lot of times, we make decisions and we're not sure on, you know, is this the right decision moving forward? You know, looking at like public safety and seeing that people are happier and feel safer in our community is a good thing. And I think we've got to make sure that we don't be satisfied with where we're at now. We continue to move forward. But I think a lot of the things that we talked about years ago, I can tell you, I've been on the council and being the mayor now for, for six years, four years as the mayor, two as a council member. But, you know, we had talked about improving lighting. We've talked about the Shot Spotter program that we are a partner with and some of the other initiatives that we've, that we've gone over. And sometimes you make these decisions up here and you're like, is this the right move? Is this a good quality investment for the citizens of Greenville? And clearly, you can see from this survey that it was. And I think that's great, and that's a good thing to have. But also, the nice thing about these surveys is you get to find out where citizens feel that it's inadequate or the level of service is dropping. It allows us the opportunity to go ahead and address those, which I think is extremely beneficial. And I looked at several of them. We've got a couple of things that I think we're going to address a little bit later in the meeting. And we've got different opportunities as far as what we can do and how we can fund things in the future to be able to address those issues. So, thank you for the hard work, and I'm sure we'll have more questions in the future. And I'm sure staff will work hard to make sure that we continue to work hard and address some of the deficiencies and continue to increase the level of service we can provide for the citizens of Greenville.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And again, we've got a lot more opportunity now with the Survey Monkey tool to-
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
And how, how often can we do a survey?
As often as we want.
So, like, we could do, you know, and I wouldn't suggest that we do it really often because you're going to have fluctuations, but-
We, we've actually got, I meant to mention this earlier. We've actually got Transit utilizing it right now for their mobility survey that they're conducting. And we've used it internally for a couple of things, too.
It'd be interesting to do something. I, I'll tell you that the number one complaint I get are our roads. Everybody complains about our roads. It'd be interesting to do some type of survey and understand, dig deeper into their reasoning. Some of it's just, you know, I saw a pothole and, you know, they're not being maintained. But it would be interesting to see where they feel the deficiencies are. And I know there's deficiencies, believe me. I've, I've seen some of our roads in our community and we're continuing to work on them. But it would be interesting to dive into something like that.
The best thing about this tool is the ability that we, we don't have to hire a firm to run the survey.
Right.
It's not, we had many, many complaints from the last surveys about how long it took people to complete them. But with this Survey Monkey tool, we could, we could come up with a five or 10-question survey and get it out there. We can track where the responses are. It's just, it gives us a lot more flexibility. And I think that what you'll find is, that's probably how surveys will go in the, in the future, is they won't be these long surveys. They'll be just a few questions, you'll just be able to do them a lot more frequently.
Sure, that's great.
But this is a great tool, and I appreciate Brock's efforts and the PIO staff to really determine what's the best tool, to listen to people's concerns about the length of the survey, but to still keep us on track with that sort of, some sort of engagement with the public on city services on some regular interval. And COVID has, there's a, there's a, we've talked about this before, there's a COVID impact in all of this.
Absolutely.
So, can we be provided with the link for the surveys as they come out? And that way, we can share it within our respective communities?
Sure.
Especially with the transit, because I know north of the river, we have our own website and things like that. So, people, whoever may miss it, and via email, we can send it out.
Like a community website?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we do.
Sure.
So, we can send that out and share it with people.
I'll make a note when I get back over here to follow up. I don't have that link.
Yeah, whomever has it, yeah. If they could just kind of give it to the council and, like I said, our respective communities, we can share it.
Okay.
Just have something, don't complete it twice. Like, if you went online, just don't do it twice. But I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, same by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Pose, say nay.
Motion passes 3-0.
We're adjourned.